I mean.
Before I pray, I want to tell y'all something that happened last Thursday. Six people that I know died last Thursday. Now, some were old, some were older, some were young. So the reason I want you to be aware of that when we pray tonight, there's a lot of families hurt. So y'all, y'all, let's please remember this day, okay? Father God, we just thanks David, thank you for the many blessings you would give.
Yeah.
Keep us mindful of what you've done in our lives and how valuable our friends and our family are here, Lord. We ask now to just bless this council and use up the do your will and everything you say and do in Christ's name. Amen.
Freedom of information now. And according to the South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy six is amended. The Man Star Mother's Enterprise has been notified at the date that I place at the end of this meeting. I'd like to take a just a little. The welcome Oscar back. Been a long hard fight but persisted, paid off. For David. Uh, I am for approval of minutes, uh, August twenty fourth to thousand twenty three.
Motion.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Got a second in discussion. All favoring motion, seven to five to say no. I oppose likewise, the eyes have. Resolution.
The one thing I had pending, I gave this Davis.
Orness.
With item A and B, we thought we were ready on one of these, but it, it, I haven't heard back, so I don't think we are. So they were, those are still on hold. Item C is a first reading, just to remind you and those in attendance, first reading only requires reading the title. We do not have to take action um on this. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash one two. An ordinance to approve a master lease for various office spaces located in the county's property located at thirteen oh five North Main Street. Marion, South Carolina to authorize the lease for the use with each tenant, each future tenant by county resolution only. To authorize the county minister to execute such lease, reaching every tenant on an ongoing basis and authorize all of the matters related thereto. That's all I have.
Committee reports, committee number one, Ms. Davis has nothing at this time.
That's correct.
And there's nothing before the committee, right?
Yes, sir.
Committee number two. Twenty ten.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Nothing at this time, legal update.
I do not have anything in this section.
You're good.
Oh, wouldn't do that.
Administered low date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, I too would like to um welcome back Councilman Foxworth and look forward to working with you. Um, under our capital sales tax, um, I just want to give you a couple of brief updates. Um, our park, our parking lot, uh, the contractors still are having some problems with the concrete. Um, and the asphalt sealing issue, so um, they are looking to seal it soon. Uh, so there have been some delays, but we hope to have the project done by November, as you know, it's kind of been. Um, pushed back a little bit, we were supposed to have it done in July, but due to the concrete issues, we've had to push it back. So I will keep you updated as I get updates from our project engineer, Ms. Watford. Next, um, in our airport, the runway paving is complete. Um, if you remember, we were gonna be um scheduled to have that completion in November, so we are way ahead of schedule. Um, but the painting and lighting has also begun, so once that is finished, we will be finished with our runway. And I'll give you updates when that is complete on the paving and the lighting part. Uh, on our animal shelter, um, I'm excited to say that the U building will be torn down on Monday. Um, and that's gonna be early morning Monday, so if anybody's in attendance, would like to attend and see that being torn down. Um, that building is old, um, it has caused a lot of issue due to um, the uh. I guess age of the building, and so tearing that down will allow us to put up a metal building for temporary use. As we transition to our new animal shelter, we're still gonna be using this building, we're still gonna have animals in there. Um, that's where our employees um have offices also, um, and so. That building, once that building is up, we will be back in full operation. So I'm excited to um. Know that that's coming along, so again, that's gonna be on Monday when our public works department will be tearing that building down. Um, next, our detention center, just want to give you an update on the internal um re- um renovations. We are pretty much um working through those innovations and should have that internal um renovations complete mid-January. So I'll continue to keep giving you updates, again, this is not the extension, this is only internal, this is the um phase two of that detention center. Under miscellaneous, I would like to um make you aware of. Our Centenary Community um Fire Department, our Rural Fire Department, they will be participating in um an upcoming. Um, election for seven board members on October twenty first at twelve o'clock. Um, Ms. Wallena has sent that out via Facebook, it's on our website, so information is um out to the public. So again, that's October twenty first, um, twenty twenty three at twelve, twelve o'clock noon. And that's for the Centenary Rural Fire Department elections for their board. Um, the next thing I want to just give you an update about, the county was presented with an opportunity a couple of years ago to participate in a USDA. Um, watershed flood prevention program. Um, as you're aware, we have issues with our drainage and um flooding around the county. And since we didn't take advantage of that opportunity during that time, it's been presented to us again, and I've already um. Prepared a meeting to meet with them in mid-October. I know a couple of other counties have taken advantage of this opportunity and have gotten millions of dollars, so I'm gonna meet with them. And keep you guys abreast on what we can do for Marion County. We also have um and need approval of our grievance committee. Grievance committee has um a couple of our members no longer work for the county, so I have, I am gonna present members and ask for your approval. Um, those individuals are Pam Page, Lori Wise, Stature Rogers. Deborah Johnson, Zach McKay, and Ms. Sabrina Davis will be our alternate. So I'm asking for approval from council for the grievance committee.
You hear the recommendation what I hear, so move.
That's second.
The motion is answered, any discussion on the motion?
How were members selected for this grievance committee?
I select the members.
What was the general criteria that you were looking for?
Um, I mixed the gender, race, um longevity, some, some have been here longer, some. Have been here a shorter period of time, um, but it is in the guidelines for the administrator to select that committee. And I've looked at individuals who have not been on the committee before.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All the favor of the motion, seven to five to say no.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, yeah, I say.
Um, couple more other things and then I'll be done. Um, additionally, the Marion County um has adopted. Or and updated our Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. Um, I have been working personally with Joseph Lewis, who is um a part of the PD cog. And has helped me update our um ADA compliance. So I have a copy of that compliance and I can provide you all with a copy and ask that council approve that. So I'll be presenting that um to Mr. Chairman for your signature. We also have uh. Two commissions that we need appointees for, um, first, we have Marion County Economic Development Commission. Uh, we have three districts for, and those um. Individuals have only attended one meeting, so we are needing some new individuals, maybe these. Um, people aren't committed at the time, but we do need to move forward with appointing new members in that district. And that's gonna be District um two, District six, and District seven. And that is for, again, Marion Economic Development Commission. In addition to that, we have one um. Appointment for the Marion County Planning Commission, and that's a vacant seat in um, Mr. Foxworth in the district, so.
I, I also want to.
Okay, do we need to do that now, Sabrina?
Okay. Professor comments?
Yes, ma'am.
You got a quick.
Yes, sir.
For the economic develop um board, has y'all notified these people and let them know that we're moving forward without them, or we just, how are we gonna handle that?
I can, I, I'll have Zach um. Or Sabrina.
Yeah.
We can notify them and let them know before the next appointment. Finally, um, as you're aware, last meeting, I gave you an update on our PARD money. Um, that money is to be used for parks and recreation um and updating that. I just wanted to let you know that I've worked with our Public Buildings Director. And we have come up with a list of every park in Marion County and identified the needs for those parks. So I will be working with him and be, and will give you updates as we identify which parks we're going to um. Put some TLC in this year. And that is all that I have for administrative updates.
I didn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry, I said, that's all I have for administrative updates.
Request a comment by members of the council.
Yeah, I've had a couple of people call me about the parking lot out front, that the parking, the handicap parking. Was quite a distance from the door and I, the whole point of having a handicap parking is, is there any way we can move some slots up there closer to the wall?
Well, um, I did speak with Sandy Watford, who's our project engineer uh for that project. What we're gonna do is we'll, we'll right now have six handicap slots, um. They won't necessarily be, they'll be as close to the door as possible without being in the way of that. You know, road and front entrance to the door, but we are gonna open up that side door. Um, as you know, we keep that side door closed um or locked, and only the two main doors are open. So I'm gonna open up that side door, so it's a less of a walk for um our individuals who need assistance to get in.
This part.
Um, my point, seats of my zoning appeals board will be uh Seon Sanders. And after the meeting, Ms. Sabrina, I give you all this information.
You value it.
I have a few things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first off, um, let me thank Mr. uh Phil Rogers. Um, who did some wonderful work for us um at the Park in Britton's Neck and Gresham. Um, particularly helping us with a massive uh Britton's Neck uh high school reunion that took place. A couple of weeks ago, we had classes going back all the way to the fifty that showed up. Um, and so his attention to that helped us have a successful and a great time. And also with the Park and Gresham, it's becoming a new uh sporting venue for us on Sundays, where we've had some crowds coming over for. Kickball games that have brought a lot of people out from Johnsonville, Hemingway, um, and I think um some folks in Bucksport. Um, so thank him so much for helping us out with that. Um, first of all, I think it might be good to share just publicly what is the purpose of the grievance committee? So that everyone will have an understanding why we need this.
Yes, sir, um, the purpose of the grievance committee is to allow employees to plead their case. Um, if they have felt they've been wrongly done by the county um in an employment situation. So it is an appeal to a decision that was made possibly to terminate or to demote. Um, and that will give the employee the opportunity to plead their case and allow the members of the committee. To um make a decision uh and present that decision against the original.
Thank you. Um, next up, I received a letter on August twenty first from Kenneth Cobb and Company. Um, sharing a few things in four pages, I don't know if anyone else on the committee received that or not. Um, but one of the things that talked about was um the material misstatements regarding audit planning. Um, but it says that they have a new accounting software and uh they're in their first full year under a new financial officer. And in their own words, quote, these may increase the county's risk of reporting errors. And they invite us to invite them to come, uh bring them in for a further conversation about this issue. I'd like to have them come in and maybe we can meet with them to talk with them about what potentially could be some. Reporting errors uh based on their new accounting software, issues that they raised themselves in their own letter of August twenty first.
Yes, sir, I can reach out to Kenneth Cobb and set that up.
Thank you so much. Uh, next thing I want to do is recognize some members of the uh Marion County Sheriff's Department. Recently, they were recognized by the Federal Bureau of Investigation for their work in helping to close a very important uh case. And dealt with murder, trafficking across state lines, things of that issue. And so Special Advisory Agent for the FBI, uh, Mr. Joaquin Voliger came and presented um three members of the Sheriff's Department. Uh, with a citation for outstanding assistance to the FBI in connection with its investigative efforts. Uh, those members of our Sheriff's Department include Captain Aurelius Cribb, Detective Dwayne Rogers, and Victims Advocate Tammy Irwin. And I want to acknowledge them and thank them for their diligent work and timeless uh work in bringing this res- issue to a resolution for our country. Um, and for that family who so desperately needed it. So thank you to them. Um, just want to bring up something, uh, can you ask Mr. Rogers to look at the lighting at Britton's Neck Community Park?
Sure.
Um, it was somehow it's on some kind of timer, but it's not working correctly. Um, next thing I want to present is uh. And I want to have, I just want to give this to you, um, Madam Administrator, and let you think about it, take it back to your team. But I had a conversation with the Britton's Neck Fire Department. And what we've seen since uh the South Carolina Department of Transportation made changes to Highway three seventy eight. Particularly between uh what we know as the Park and Blow uh on down to the Bay Road, it's created these curvatures in the road. And we've seen a huge uptick in accidents because of it over the last few years. But what's that doing is because of the speed of people traveling and the nature of the accidents, it's drawing out our EMS service. Down to three seventy eight during a lot of these accidents, and what's that's doing is putting a stress that we didn't plan for. On being able to provide some services to other parts of that district out of that uh EMS station. So one of the things that we talked about is that they already have a mutual aid agreement. With uh Fire Department in Ori County and the Fire Department in Johnsonville. To see if, until we can get our EMS fully staffed. If we can do, extend that mutual aid agreement to the EMS service with the group in Johnsonville and the group in uh Ori County, but just along the three seventy eight corridor. Not further into the county, and there's some mechanism we can talk about to make that work. Next, I want to talk about uh uh. I want to make a motion um at this point that we uh create a resolution uh to recognize Bernie L. Bell Senior.
Sir.
Mr. Bell was undoubtedly the greatest educator that Britton's Neck community has ever known. He ran his high school with a firm hand. He was a deaf administrator. He was a loving mentor, swift disciplinarian, and a tremendous motivator. And if it was for, wasn't for Mr. Bell, I wouldn't have not had the experiences I've had in life following high school. So he passed early this morning after a very brief illness, and we want to make sure that we recognize his contributions. To the community of Britton's Neck and Marion County, because I'm always gonna be an advocate of Britton's Neck and a, and a proponent of Britton's Neck High School and the people that it produced. Um, uh, out of seven members of this council, two of them are graduates of Britton's Neck High School. Um, so Mr. Bell, um, he was just tremendous, and uh we want to acknowledge him, um, and thank you all for offering of the most, the first. First and seconding the motion.
You got a motion, you got a second, any discussion on the motion? You know, all of favor of the motion, seven to five to say no.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, yeah, I say.
I have something for, I'd like Senator Williams to consider. Uh, reached out to uh Department, uh, local S- South Carolina Department of Transportation offices. To address this issue with the water backing up um to the Richardson store, Paul Richardson Road and nine oh eight. And down the dirt lane that we've had consistent issues with. Well, in the middle of that section of nine oh eight, there are two tiles. That's supposed to take the water and run it underneath the road out to the river. Those two tiles are filled with dirt and debris, and they need to be cleaned out to help um get this water moving. Um, and I hopefully can get some assistance with that, because now the water's starting to back up into the store. And it's preventing um a few people who live down that dirt road, particularly some vulnerable elderly. Um, people from getting out and getting some assistance in case of emergency. Um, so I hope that you can help us with that.
Absolutely.
Um, last two things, um. Do we have any kind of timeline about getting the Airport Committee constituted and the opioid recovery committee?
Um, I'll start with the airport, um, we do not have a timeline on the airport. Um, I know I presented that last meeting um in terms of establishing an airport committee. Um, with the recent changes that we are having with the airport, I'd like to um. Get those changes set in stone first and then move forward with establishing an airport committee. Um, as far as the opioid, I did have a meeting with um our Trinity Behavior Healthcare. I needed some information from them to um submit to opioid uh recovery program. Um, and I'm also talking with our EMS department to identify some of the needs that they have, so. That's a work in progress, and I can keep you updated as I go along.
Thank you so much, and please give my regards to Mr. uh Dow Black last thing. Uh, and their quick efforts to address some of the issues with dirt roads. I want to thank some of our, um, what I would call some of my uh male carrier partners who were very quick to call and take pictures and. Let me know where there's some issues at, and so I can go out and check it out for myself, and they've been able to help them a lot, they, the male carriers have been very pleased. Um, with the help that they've been receiving.
That's good news, I'll definitely give them that message.
Thank you very much.
That it. I do have, I do have one thing, let me just say one thing, speaking back on the resolution you asked for. If you never sat down with Marvin Stevens and Bernie Bell. And listened to him tell jokes, you missed a lot. I tell you, the world is gonna miss Bernie Bell. Alright.
Um. Ms. Watford, I want to thank you about the watershed stuff we have going on. I know Georgetown kind of received fifteen million a few months ago, and when I met with the guys from USDA. They were very interested in Marion County taking, being a part of that program, so thank you for following up with them, I'd be emailed, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir.
You value it. At this time, we need to have an executive session for personnel and contractual matter.
Yes, sir.
So move, second.
Motion second, we discuss. All of favor of the motion, seven to five to say no.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Doing these things.
Did a good job. It was beautiful.
Alright, really well. You ready, Sabrina?
Yes, sir.
We went into the second session uh for personnel and contractual matter. And we need to come out of these.
So move.
Okay, first and second, discussion, all favor of the motion, seven to five to say no.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, yeah, I say, but now I'm back in open second.
Okay, let's check, I would like to um briefly talk about the PD cog board. I know we said we have four members on there, and two members is no longer with the county. And I want to get the board opinion on moving forth with the two new board members.
Well, you know, bylaws say that at least two other members need to be let into the fish. From the county, and we got that. I'm one, I'm one of the board members, and Ms. Floyd is one of the board members. Tim Harper is one of the board members, and this Smith is one of the board members. If y'all want to take action to replace any or all, you can.
I mean.
The majority of camps.
Right. But my question, and I'm, I'm just learning, like I said, I'm not, how's it benefiting us with the two people that's not here? With the county versus someone working with the county or on the board? I mean, I'm just asking, I'm just want to get clear of question.
I don't have, I don't have an answer, but. Mr. King, I have no problem unless you look at replacing the two of them.
Okay.
And if you, if we want to in the next meeting, let's get together and look at, maybe replace it.
I mean, I'm home with the majority, now, I want.
I don't have a problem with that.
I'm into dealing with that.
Yeah, I, I would support it.
Just replacing the two members.
Yeah.
So we have two, two names, or can we suggest one now?
Just two now. Uh, I want to make a motion that we replace two members that are currently uh on the PD cog who are no longer affiliated with Marion County. I'd like to replace them with Mr., one with Mr. Taurus Gilcrease, because his capacity and power that works for City of Mullins makes him. A perfect person to be on this board, and our interim administrator, Ms. Javis Watford, to replace the role that Mr. um, Tim Harper had as administrator.
You got a motion? Would you have another motion, man? Or I'm gonna get it.
We gotta get it, we gotta get it second.
Yeah, I'm second.
Second. That's second, any discussion? All favor of the motion, seven to five to say no.
Aye.
Oppose. Yeah, I say it. Alright, well, just for clarification purposes.
What I said in the motion is voting to remove two members on the PD cog who are no longer affiliated with Marion County. And replacing them with two new members, so that it will be filled with three um members of, from elected officials and one person who's at large. The one elected official that will replace Elizabeth Smith will be Mr. Taurus Gilcrease, and then the at-large person will be Ms. Javis Watford. It will replace Mr. Smith and Tim Harper.
And so we, did we make enough proposals?
You, you can make a nomination.
I'd like to nominate uh Mr. Oscar and Mrs. Luanne T.
But we've already voted, we've already voted and approved.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm trying to question you before we even get fucked up.
Well, there was, there was a motion and a second that was already there for that, but it didn't go by way of nominations, it went by way of two names put up.
Yes, that's why. I'm looking to see what the situation.
Alright, so the motion passes.
Yes, sir.
It is for the good of Marion County.
How, how long is this term for the board, a four-year term or just whenever?
Uh, there is another term.
That's okay.
Just forward. Alright, and at any time, this same council can come back in and if somebody's not going to meetings or whatever, whatever you take them off.
But I also would like, um, to ask Ms. Davis to look at all the boards that we have throughout the county, and if we don't have. And if we don't have another one that's no longer with the county as elected official or employee, could you bring back to us one of those, please? But anything like we's, we facing here now?
Yeah.
That.
Cause all the boards that have, want to be revamped. All the boards.
Alright, we need to, we need to start on that now, and then I mean, what, what, what do we gotta? So what do we gotta do now? What, make a motion, what, start that or what?
I guess that.
I just get out of the lift for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, um, I don't know if anybody can answer this question. Have we gotten, have we received the audit report from the library board?
I've received a report from them, I can um, share next council meeting.
Please, because that was months past.
Malcolm makes a weird journey.